So I will now open the select board meeting for April twentieth twenty-three at six thirty P M. For an initial executive session to be followed by open session at seven P M. So I'd like to ask the assistant town administrator to read just the executive session agenda, please.
Good evening. So tonight's executive session item is to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation. If the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in town. And the chair does so declared to discuss the matter of five-star building corps versus the town of Sherburne. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A Section Twenty-one, A, Three, and Seven. And Suffolk Construction versus D C A M four forty-nine Mass four forty-four parentheses two thousand and seven Sherburne Library. You'll need a second and a roll call.
Thank you, and I do declare the need for an executive session, and so I move that we enter into executive session. So I need a second and a roll call vote. Thank you. Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well, so we'll get organized here for executive session and we'll see.
Is the Courtney Icon actually on Steve's side?
I don't know.
Uh, it's both of us.
Okay.
You want to stay? We'll let you stay. I think that's.
I don't think he does. He's playing video game.
Turn the recording off, by the way.
Of promotion of James Graziano to Sergeant, Chief Thomas Galvin is here for that. Item number seven is consideration of Chapter Two sixty-nine of the Acts of twenty-twenty-two Retiree One-Time Cola for F Y twenty-three. Item number eight is the consideration of update to the select board policy and procedures. Meeting agenda items in quotations correspondence. Item number nine is a review and discussion of the town forest charge. Item number ten is twenty-twenty-three town meeting prep. Discussion on agenda items to prior to the start of town meeting. And various warrant articles that the select board will speak on the annual town meeting. Item number eleven is consideration of routine business, which is select board reports and town administrator reports. I have received a request from the police chief, Tom Galvin. If we could kindly take item number five and item number six at the beginning of the tonight's meeting. So that he can join his family for dinner. He's on vacation. And you're right.
Which which we will obviously, which we will obviously do.
Move approval of the agenda with the with the moving of the items for for Tom.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion? George?
Hi.
Paul's not here. Eric?
Hi.
And I might as well. Four to zero. Diane. So the first item we'll cover as item number five, which is the appointment agreement for it's soon to be Lieutenant Tedstone. Go for it, Tom.
Um, just we've been through this for quite a while now and just asking you to final approval on the contract that has been negotiated for Lieutenant Tedstone.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion before we vote? I think we've covered it. Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I might as well. Paul, we're just voting to accept the previously discussed and negotiated contract with Luke Tedstone for lieutenant. Do you do you want to vote?
I'll vote aye.
Okay, so that's a that's a five to zero Diane for item number five, and I don't know if Luke's here. Are you see here?
I am, yes.
You want to you want to just say hi or?
I'm going to type on.
I'm trying to find you. There you are.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
All right. Well, thank you for hanging in there with us. We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You didn't need to introduce yourself to anybody, but but uh, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. All right, Tom.
Well, excellent. Well, next with the vacancy at Sergeant now created by the promotion of Lieutenant Senna. I'm asking that you promote Officer James Graziano to the rank of Sergeant. Officer Graziano joined the Sherburne Police Department as a part-time officer in March of two thousand and eight. Quickly in September was appointed as a full-time special officer working the role of as a dispatcher. He then in two thousand and fourteen attended the Clement Police Academy. I guess where he began his supervisory career in law enforcement as one of the four squad leaders. He also serves the department as an E M T, child passenger safety technician. He handles our firearms licensing. He's our I T coordinator. He's been a full-time officer in charge on our overnight shift for quite some time now. And he also has a bachelor's degree from University of Massachusetts Dartmouth and a master's degree from Curry College. He's married to his wife Shannon, and he takes care of his daughter Lucy and son Lucas who if he can supervise Lucas, he's he's all set. He's got a couple of great kids that a lot of our seniors know from the turkey dinners and other events. So it's my pleasure to ask you to promote Officer Graziano to the rank of Sergeant.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Approve.
A second?
I second.
All right, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Congratulations, Jimmy, and thanks, Tom. Do you want to say anything, Jimmy?
Sure, I just want to say thank you to the chief of the town. Appreciate this opportunity. I feel I've learned a lot from current and former officers that I've worked with over my fifteen-year career here at Sherburne Police Department. That has helped prepare me for this role. I'm looking forward to new challenges, making new partnerships, and looking forward to this new leadership role in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, and I appreciate you taking us out of order tonight.
No worries.
Back to your vacation, Tom.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
All right, we're going to circle back and do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
All right.
Second.
Second. Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you on the consent agenda. We're now up to Jackie and the signing of the town election warrant.
Move approval of the election warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well.
I might as well.
Jackie early, I can I can actually do.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say I can stop by tomorrow to sign it, so.
Do you want everyone to do it in person, Jackie?
It doesn't matter to me if you guys want to vote to have Diane or Jeremy sign it, that that's okay with me. It doesn't matter. I'll be at the office tomorrow and also Monday and Tuesday. You could also sign it town meeting night. If you all wanted to sign it in person, I could bring it. It doesn't have to be posted until seven days before the election, so I have to post it by May second.
Why don't whoever's on in town tomorrow go in and sign it and anyone that's remaining? Because it's just Tuesday when we have the town meeting. Why don't you bring it and anyone that hasn't done it will do it then?
Okay, perfect.
Why don't we get as many as we can? If you just get a chance to do it tomorrow, it'll it'll make it easier.
And and Jackie Sunny wants me to come tomorrow anyway, so you'll give him another treat.
Okay, I'll give him another dog biscuit.
Go to the transfer station. They have treats too, George.
Jackie has a whole box of treats in her office.
I just bought some.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
What treat do I get if I go to?
Yeah, you gotta.
We have candy.
Bring your dog. You know treats for you.
You gotta get a you gotta prove you have a vaccine, rabies vaccine first of all. So now the next item agenda is the letter of endorsement to be included in the East Coast Greenway project. Rob, do you want to? Walk us through this?
Uh, sure. The East Coast Greenway is marked out path with sometimes with alternative routing all the way from Maine at the Canadian border to Key West. It's it's something like three thousand miles. And I think roughly one-third of it is on rail trails or other off-road paths, and two-thirds of it is on roads. They would like to specify the Sherburne Holliston and the sort of east branch of the Milford Upper Charles Trail as part of it. So I would encourage anybody who's interested in this kind of thing to go to their the East Coast Greenway website. They have a wonderful website. They have a zoomable map of the entire Greenway. But it would basically be coming down from Framingham along Western Avenue. And then turning out to Whitney Street and going down the hill and over the bridge. And at that point, go on to our trail. And all they're really asking is if we would if they supply us with a couple of East Coast Greenway signs that we'd put them up. And that we, you know, commit to continuing maintenance of the trail.
That sounds great.
I think it sounds great. Absolutely. I completely support the these these activities and and being a part of it is actually kind of bit of honor. So I think I absolutely support this.
Um, whoops, Paul back. Do you do what? Do you want us to we to sign it in person? Rob, or should we design Diane to sign for us, which is it's just the chair have to sign or does always have to sign?
Um, well, it just I think it's listed as coming from the select board, so I don't think it really matters and.
But do you have the form for us to sign?
Well, I had given the letter to Diane. It's in your packet.
Diane?
Um, okay. And there's actually two parts to it. There's a letter and then there's an application, and I believe the letter is pretty much completely correct as it just needs a date and signature. The the application. There's there's a couple of items in it that still need to be filled out. I think I forgot to put in the D P W phone number is the phone number of the agency responsible for doing maintenance on it. I assume that would be correct. And I think one of the distances on it is incorrect. And I so I'll get another copy of that in which is corrected, but I think the letter is good as is.
All right, so Diane, do you want to? If I come in tomorrow morning to sign it, does that work?
Yes, come on in and I'll put it on a letterhead. And you can sign it.
I'll do that. I think probably from the chair should be sufficient.
Okay.
Then you can amend whatever the application data points you need to do. So I still need to vote, though, on signing the letter, I believe. Do we vote on that already? Did we vote already, though?
No, no, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric, I didn't forget you this time.
Thank you, I.
And I am I as well. Five to zero. Thank you very much for for doing that, Rob.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention some of the people who were key on this was the planning board as of about twenty years ago that arranged for the purchase of the piece of the rail trail and the easement on the Whitney Farms property, and that was, I think, mostly the work of John Higley and our our planner, Gino Carlucci. So they did a great job there. And also, you know, Robert Widnicton Holliston has driven the whole Holliston section of the trail, and he's he's done a lot of work there, and he's a great resource going on. I'm working with a group of trail advocates who are really trying to push at the state level to see if we can do something about extending the trail north and making some very nice connections there. But that's all long-term work in progress.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, do you still have a question or you can lower your hand?
I just wanted to just say make sure that you get to review the dates for May and June that was part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Because there was a question on the dates not being good for some of the select board members. And that's why it was being brought back tonight.
Okay. Why don't we right now? We don't have a dates on the agenda.
Yeah, it says it says on the consent agenda, meeting dates.
Have we discussed that under select board reports?
Sure.
I think we can, can't we?
Of course.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Keep the flow going here. So next is acceptance of gifts and grants, and Margot, I believe you're first, wherever you are. You're going to join us?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes.
Oh.
It shows you is first.
Well, I'm just hoping that this small gift will stimulate others to donate in memory or in honor of a former teacher or employee and seeing the town green transformed is one of my fourth quarter goals. And I think it's also a goal of the town master plan.
Yes, I think this is great, Margot. Thank you very much for this, and I actually agree. I do hope also it is a seed that basically creates more as well. And I think if it takes something which, you know, has had a few hiccups along the way, and this makes it such a such a nice a nice thing at the end here. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank Margot, too. This is wonderful, Margot. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Margot. We look forward to a fundraiser that brings in a lot more donations like yours. Thank you.
That is the goal.
Thank you, Margot. This is very generous of you.
She won't say it, but also Margot and her daughter Jennifer out there several weekends ago raking leaves for most of the day. So they've dedicated in addition to being on the the landscaping committee of the town center campus, Margot's donated way more than this in time. So anyway, thank you from all of us, Margot.
Oh, thank you all.
We need to vote to accept this gift, so do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All right, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thanks again, Margot. Liz, you're up. Wherever you are, there you are.
I second. Margot has done an enormous amount for the library as well with the landscape, so just yet again, another thank you. She's amazing. So I am here to ask for acceptance of a Mass Cultural Council grant. I applied for this grant. It is in it's called the Festivals and Projects, and it's in support of arts, humanities, and sciences that's provide community and public benefit. And so this grant is a financial assistance to bring arts to an intergenerational audience. We applied with the the library and the Sherburne Council on Aging Sue. And some of the programs we'll be doing are macrame, copper bookmarks, rug making, clay cactus workshops, and indoor gardening. We've already started this program and we've we've had a big success. We had our first program and there were, I think, ages eight to ninety. It was pretty pretty amazing, so I hope you will consider accepting this gift.
Hey.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Marion?
Liz, how much is the grant for?
Oh, my apologies. It's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Great.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Uh, and Zach, last but not least?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm really proud to be before you tonight to accept this grant. This grant's from the Firehouse Subs Restaurant Chain, their Public Safety Foundation. And the reason why I'm so proud to be here with this grant tonight is is actually because I didn't write it. Two of our members wrote it, and we're trying to pass along some of our grant writing skills to other people. So firefighter Anthony Looney and our assistant EMS coordinator Mike Anchen wrote this grant as for a sim mannequin, which will be used for training. It's basically like a medical school grade sim mannequin. We're going to be one of the only five departments in the in the region that I'm aware of that's going to have one of these. It's going to be a big help because just last week we got approved to to add some skills to our basic life support ambulance. Our medical director last week just approved us to do CPAP and super aquatic airways. So this is going to be a big help for us to complete the training with that.
What is what is Firehouse Subs, though?
It's a restaurant chain.
I was going to say the chain. There's one right next to my office in Rhode Island. It's very good, actually.
Oh, really?
Too happy to see that the money is actually going to to to. I mean, they talk about it all the time, so it's great to see it actually happening, so.
You better go. You better go.
I know, I'm going to definitely report it even more now.
Exactly, yeah. They used to be one on Boils and Street across from the Boston Public Library. They're around, but.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Yeah, what I know of is in Cranston, Rhode Island that I.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
Does this um, does this tip you over the were you close to a million dollars in grants?
Between the Holbrook money and this, we're close. I gotta I'm gonna have to do another count. We have we have a lot of stuff pending, too.
Yeah, because you were on the verge when he spoke last time.
We're close. We're close.
Before we get off this, before we get off the discussion, just I'm going to take this opportunity. It's kind of close to the agenda item that people fill out the fire survey or your needs on fire emergency survey that's on the town's webpage.
Thank you for that plug. Thank you.
All right, Paul's made a motion to accept the grant. He always likes accepting money.
Yeah.
And I think George seconded. So Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I'm I as well. Thank you. All right, we're now on to agenda item number seven, which is the Chapter Two sixty-nine of Acts of twenty-twenty-two, which is the retiree one-time cola, which we discussed at a prior meeting. So I think we're just accepting this. Is that correct, Diane? We've already discussed the topic. You're muted, Diane.
Yep, motion to accept Chapter Two sixty-nine of the Acts of twenty-twenty-two. That's what we.
I I was the one that asked to be over held over because I wanted to see what the numbers are, and the numbers like are one hundred and sixty-nine thousand over ten years with fourteen something being the first year. Jeremy can give you the exact numbers. I wonder if advisory has been consulted on that and whether they have a position given the fact that we're going to have to come up with that money.
Should I go ahead, Jeff?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Uh, thank you. So advisory has not been consulted on that, so I can't speak for the whole committee. But I would say that the requested cola is pretty similar to the cola that advisory recommended for non-union employees, which was four and a half percent. This would be a total of a five percent cola, so it's pretty close to that range. So to me, I can't speak for the committee because I've not consulted with the full committee, but to me, it seems like a reasonable simple request to have made.
Thank you. Then I would move acceptance.
Were you going to say something, Eric?
Nope.
Okay, I think it also had the initially was unknown because a certain percentage of the towns had to approve it, I think, wasn't that?
Yes, two-thirds.
Two-thirds, Jeff. I'm not sure where whether up to that or not, but even if if we didn't approve it, we would still incur that cost of two-thirds approved it, right?
Correct, yeah, as a majority of the communities have have approved thus far. Communities have voted against.
So I think the thing is.
During the two-thirds mandate.
So it wouldn't advisory really wouldn't have much to do about it because if the majority approve it, then we would incur the cost.
Jimmy, can you repeat those numbers again? Who approved and haven't?
Sure, so this this approval is a one-time cola increase for retirees that would take effect in in this current fiscal year, F Y twenty-three. If two-thirds of the the select boards within the Middlesex County Retirement System approve this, retirees would receive a five percent cola, which is two percent more than what they would have otherwise for current statute, and it's a one-time for this this year, this fiscal year. That that one-time cola adds about one percent to the unfunded costs of of the pension system. And to finance it, the the Middlesex County Retirement Board is proposing to increase the assessments of the community should this be adopted, starting in F Y twenty-six by approximately one percent. And in the case of Sherburne, that would be an additional fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars per year. Our current annual assessment that we're paying this year is one point two million, so that helps put that fourteen thousand in perspective. That's the the overall cost from the actuary of the the retirement system, the overall cost of the account for this one-time cola is what Paul mentioned, the one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which is basically spread out over ten years.
And what's the numbers of the towns that have approved and have not approved right now?
There a majority have, so there's what, thirty communities is about fifteen that have approved. This is as of last week. So it may not have accounted for meetings this week, so about half have approved. And I haven't heard of any that I'm on an email chain with area town administrators, haven't heard of any community not approving thus far. But if if two-thirds approve, it doesn't matter what the other third do. All of the communities that that are contributing to the retirement system will face this this increased allotment.
Okay, thank you.
I think in our packet, we it said we have fifty-three employees or former employees that are in this retirement plan right now.
Yes, and they deserve the compensation if we can afford it. That's why, again, I had to ask it to be held so that we could find out what the numbers were. And I'm really glad that the chairman of Advisory Committee is recommending that this is.
Well, if it's also fourteen thousand dollars, worst case scenario, we could make a reserve fund transfer for something.
And we have no choice because we can't.
So I think I think it's a, yeah, definitely.
Okay, that sounds good. So I think we need to vote, though, still to accept it.
Yes, I made a motion.
And so do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And the next item is Select Board Policy and Procedures Meeting Agenda Items Correspondence. Do you want to lead us on this, Jeremy?
Sure. So I this is basically based on some discussions at your prior meetings on distribution of of correspondence received by the select board. It it actually it it made me look at the current policy of the board, which I included in Europe's agenda packet, which was last adopted in two thousand and twelve. There's actually found in the office here some older versions, versions that date back to nineteen eighty-five. But with the exception of some updates to your policy as how you adopt or appoint committees, there really hasn't been any updates to your policy. And in reviewing it, there there, in my opinion, there's some opportunity for some updates. In particular, the way you you set your agendas and your meetings, which your policy spells out. The roles of the town administrator and the select board. And and the like, so I'd like to work with the board to help you kind of update and modernize your your procedures and practices. Just wanted to use take advantage of this agenda item to get this out, get it out there to the board. See your thoughts. If, you know, one or two of you would like to volunteer to work with me to to work on some updates. But in the interim, I'm suggesting that we add to your your typical meeting agenda an item called correspondence, which would allow us to include in your, you know, would be a recurring agenda item on your meetings to that would bundle in all of your general correspondence received by the board. And and to include it in your agenda packet would be in your agenda so you could have the opportunity to to shortly discuss it. I wouldn't advise you to take any action on it, but it would at least be, you know, in your agenda such that you could say, oh, we want to have this back at a next meeting, or could you, you know, request some additional information, you know, make it a future action item? It's it's I've seen this. This is a common practice that some other boards follow. And, you know, just helps ensure that that everybody's getting the information that they'd like and has an opportunity to to digest it and request some additional information. And and set it up on a future agenda for the for the board.
If I could.
Go ahead, Paul.
So I would very strongly recommend against having an agenda item of correspondence for this reason. So I would uh very strongly recommend against having an agenda item of correspondence for this reason. We've seen that on other towns. Select board agendas. And I've been recommending pretty much everywhere that they not have that item on their agenda. And most of the towns that I've made that recommendation to have decided to follow that recommendation. The reason why I recommend we not do that is that the experience has been. That when people know that their correspondence is gonna be referred to on camera, they send the worst. Letters that are attack uh uh people by name, they they uh. Uh, try to bring in uh uh their views about the national issues. You get a whole series of things. And under a recent uh SJC decision, it's it's no longer uh permissible to. Try and maintain civility on the part of somebody who speaks. You cr- if you create the right of people to send letters to the board, which then become part of. A a uh a meeting, you are giving them a First Amendment right to say. Things that are angry, that are uncivil, that uh, as I say, attack people. And even though you don't take any vote on it. If they, you get a letter and it starts attacking somebody, it's it's so now you. Have the whole public aware that somebody's attacked. Well, that person doesn't have a chance to defend. You gotta wait for another meeting. It it is just a very bad idea from a legal perspective. The way that that correspondence is recommended to be handled is that the general correspondent should be scanned and sent to the board members. You don't wanna read it, you 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 don't open the scans. If you wanna read it, it's there. If if somebody, if the the public wants to see what letter is sent to the board, it's a public record. They they can get it, but let's let's not use up precious time in our meetings for. Reading correspondence. Our meetings are long.
Okay, uh Marion, I don't, do you wanna respond, Jimmy? Should we let Marion and Eric speak?
Something to that effect, so.
Yeah, okay, well, I think Marion had her hand up first, though, Eric.
Yeah, I I I agree with Paul. Uh, it kind of give uh. We lose control of the time constraints on our agenda. And uh it puts things on the agenda that are not appropriate for us to discuss or whatever. I think um. It it, the alternative that Paul mentioned is I'm more comfortable with that, so. Yeah.
Okay, Eric?
Um, well, first globally, I I love the idea. I think it's very proactive of Jeremy to move forward with uh actually changing, updating our policies and procedures. I really do. I think I applaud him for doing that. The specifics and correspondence, I think we can debate as we go through and look at it. Um, you know. As you do a deeper dive in this, cuz I do see some benefits of it. You can actually be selective what makes it in there. It's really up to the town administrator. I mean, we'll get we'll get copied in all these emails. It happens all the time. You know, we can't reply, we can't discuss it. It's actually, although uh uh Marion's not gonna be on the agenda, worse it'll be in the background material. You know, I mean, it's not gonna, it's nothing that we can discuss. It actually shouldn't affect the agenda outside the word correspondence on it. It's this acknowledgement, it'd be a way of just making sure that we all see it, can have something be on the agenda. Uh, and we can also make it a point where nothing is actually read aloud. Um, all that being said, maybe in today's email, maybe it's not necessary to do it, I don't know. But I do wanna move forward without volunteering, so I've been doing enough volunteering. Um, with this actually, um, with this uh revision of the policy procedures. And maybe I will volunteer. I mean, I'll take a look at it and um. I don't wanna be, you know, a dead, I commit to it tonight, but I wanna take a little bit uh closer look at the, what Jeremy put in our packet for, you know, our rules, policies, procedures. And I definitely applaud him for actually um, you know, being proactive and updating these.
Yeah, I would. Good current care with that. Go go ahead, Paul.
So I agree that this thing should be updated. I was part of the update back uh, I think it was two thousand twelve. And but as I read this, I see things like uh typos, like uh a member of the board of the town. Town administrator, well, there's no board of the town administrator. This, there's those kinds of typos, this uh. Yeah, there's a general need to to update this, and I would also volunteer to to read it. Help, I mean, I ha- I I have read it, I've read it. I've read it uh twenty-three years ago. I've read it and I've read it last night, so. Happy to help on that.
All right, we have two volunteers. We're we're doing pretty well here.
Did Eric step up?
He's, we'll keep twistin' his arm, don't worry about that. So um. I think it's also good. I agree on the correspondence. I don't, we we already have busy meetings and I don't think we wanna. Publicize anything. We get correspondence all the time. I don't think it should be, the city remembers our packet is published also. Diane posted the packet, so everyone has access to our packet, so we wouldn't want it in the packet either. It's just. We get correspondence and it gets addressed to those of us that it pertains to, or all of us if it's something that's a broader uh uh issue. So I don't know, uh, do we need to vote any? I don't think there's a vote here, is there, Jeremy?
Not per se, and you know, I thank you for for starting this conversation cuz I think. In the review of and updating these policies, I think we will have a good discussion on. Um, you know, how how would you like to structure your meetings and how you get your information and making sure you all get everything that that you need and um. And you know, kinda make your make your meetings efficient but productive. I guess no, no action required, Jeff, but um if there's consensus that, you know, one or one or two of you would like to work with me. To to update your policies, um, that would be great.
Yeah, I think we had a couple of people express interest and we can confirm that maybe in the next next two weeks. Um, I'd also like, you have uh Medfield and uh Natick experience, a little bit of benchmarking too, just. And Paul works with a lot of towns, so it'd be kinda cool to not just see what we think would be good policy changes, but maybe see what. If there's some sections that we could benchmark with two or three or four towns to. Or even Jen Thompson may have ideas on things that, you know, we could consider, so. All right, thank you for bringing that up. So the next agenda item is the town forest charge. This came about, Paul, did you still have a question in the prior one? Your hand's still up.
Sorry, sorry about that.
All right, that's okay. So uh, this came about because um we had some correspondence where people were concerned about. Uh, a potential bike park that was discussed by the Town Forest Committee um just being considered. Uh, we're not discussing the bike park tonight. Uh, I think we, is that correct, Diane? We're gonna discuss the bike park in two weeks, I believe, right, on the.
That's correct.
Whatever, two weeks from now.
Yes.
But if I can jump in, I think we talked about last week, and discuss tonight, does the select board have a role here? You know, what is it? I think there's some concern, there wasn't a public, but cuz I for one, like, you know, I'm very much against um. You know, if a if a committee is charged with a certain responsibility, you know, whether we like it or not, you know, we charge them and I'm kind of against. Us inserting ourselves, you know, we get, we get all the time, especially the regulatory boards. I mean, how many times do we get like, I don't like Concom did blah, 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 but we don't go and have them come before us, me and Jane, and or turn over decisions. Then, next week was gonna be a presentation or two weeks um from the actual um. I think it was the actual Forest Committee itself.
Correct.
A very similar presentation that they actually gave before the Forest Committee a few weeks ago.
Yeah, the only thing I brought up was that the the charge to the, which is also fifteen to twenty years old to the town force committee. It's just they'll maintain the four. There's really no charge there. It's very broad, so. We may have to decide if there's a delegation of authority for them. I'm not saying that it's necessary, but it's very uh really ill-defined, I would say.
Yeah, and that's why it's in our back, that's why we're in this discussion right now.
Yeah, you know, Paul, but you you're welcome to speak, but I I feel like we should let Dave speak also.
Um, I was just gonna speak legally, but.
Okay, that's.
So there's a state law, and state law entrusts this committee. Not the board of select with responsibility for these forests. The town adopted that, the town has implemented it, and so I agree with what Eric said. That we need to treat them the same way that we would treat the Board of Appeals or the the Conservation Commission or. The Board of Health or any other board in the town. It's not for the Board of Selectmen to tell. Any of these committees what they need to do. But what we can do is make sure that they know that there are some things that town meeting has to vote on. There are some things that uh they have the power to do. This may be some things that they're proposing that. We would require a special act of the legislature. So we can assist them to make sure that they they know what, how to do things. But I don't think we should be telling them what to do.
Well, I guess the thing here that I I'm the one that brought this part up. We haven't really defined those areas where they need uh additional approvals. In other words, I call, my word is the delegation of authority. They have certain things that they're delegated to be able to do on their own authority and certain things, as you just alluded to, that would require approval by some other entity. Whether it's town meeting or whatever it would be. Um, I don't think we've defined that.
But that's not for us to define, or let me put it another way. This law applies to three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns. And so, and it's a very old law, and so all of those questions have been answered over the years. By the courts, by experience, by events.
Where are they promulgated, Paul? How would you know what uh they can authorize without anyone else's approval? How would you know that?
You you you, you have to be a municipal lawyer.
Well, we happen to have one on our selection, but I I would think that there could be some guidelines that could make the charge. So that they understand what's within their scope and what's not. In other words, just like when I worked for a company, you know. Uh, supervisor could afford, could approve up to five hundred dollars in expense accounts that was higher than that, someone higher had to approve it. You had a delegation of authority. There's certain things that they can prove without anyone else's review. But I imagine there's some things that require, as you alluded to, bigger entities to review.
Yes.
There's no listing or a categorical description of the items for which additional authorization is required?
No, but I I can tell you the biggest one. The one that comes up most often is is called Article ninety-seven of the Constitution of the Commonwealth. That basically says that you can't take land like this and put it to any other use. Without an act of the legislature, and the legislature has passed a law that says that if you are going to seek. Legislative approval for a change of use, you have to do things like studies and. Replication of the land in other places. We have to, we'd have to go buy other land and so on and so on, so there's. There's a lot of law out there, and it's been, as I say, addressed comprehensively. So it's not for us to say, gee, we think you ought to be doing this or that. It's for us to implement the law that's already there.
Well, I understand, but that's not helpful if we're not a lawyer. Now, how would the uh uh Town Forest Committee know? To come to us with an issue that they felt we needed to know about or or need help with? How would they know to do that?
Again, uh, being a town council, this happens all the time. There are boards and committees all over the place. Sometimes need legal assistance, and that's why you have a town council. So if if they're embarking on something that. Exceeds what the Constitution of the Commonwealth allows them to do, they need town council's assistance. For that, that advice should go to them for them to, for for them to help make their decision. So if they wanna change the use, for example, of the town forest, I mean, just take extreme case, they wanna, they wanna put an asphalt plant in the middle of the town forest. They have to present an article to town meeting. Town meeting has to vote on that. And that has to include a home rule petition, and that has to then go to the state legislature.
Yeah, yeah, we got it, Paul. That's good.
It's a whole process.
I understand. Eric, do you have, you had your hand up next?
Yeah, yeah, and actually, I was gonna say something similar to what Paul just said there. I'm gonna enter, so. Use is subjective. It just simply is. And we we don't ask town council every time we wanna do anything. I reasonable people can interpret and reasonable people can read regulations. And come, you know, within a conclusion. Um, it's it's just the nature of it. As far as use, it is subjective, and I like Paul's analogy. Obviously, the Town Forest Committee does not have the right to put an asphalt plant in the in thing. I think that's a great analogy made there, Paul. In this specific case, however, we right now have a town forest committee who's uh. Maintaining trails for mountain bike use, non-motorized mountain bike use. Mountain bike use is an allowable use on a lot of town forests, rockin' arrows in my house. And a bunch of town forests, so it is not inconsistent with that. They maintain trails. Since I believe, so I believe what they are proposing here is consistent with their historic use and what they've historically been allowed. And what they've maintained on the town, on the town land. So that's my thought on the specific.
But remember, this isn't the agenda item. Tonight's just their delegation of authority. We're not discussing the bike park tonight.
Well, you are to a degree cuz the delegation of authority, they don't have the authority to put on asphalt plant. I do that, believe they have the authority to do this, do you know what I mean? Some ways.
That's a bad example in my view cuz it's an obvious extreme example. In other words, it really hasn't helped us with an issue where it would be sort of. Uh, iffy whether they need additional.
But I I think it is relevant. I think I think the what they're proposing here is relevant to this item. What's what's within their purview, if we're saying what's within their purview.
Yeah, but that's, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. We're discussing whether or not we need to change the delegation of authority or define it better.
Oh, okay. I did not realize you were looking to actually change it. I thought you were talking about.
Well, just to consider, they have, the delegation of authority is basically they'll maintain the town forests. That's all it says, so. There's no guidance as to what they can do, what things they have to get additional approval for.
I'll say that when I bring, when I brought this up last week, it was my request that we actually talk about if. This item, that's that that whatever is is within their delegation of authority. That was my intent and that is what I said two weeks ago.
It is, but you made it two parts because this is the school break week. The the discussion of the bike park is two weeks from tonight because no one's able to be here tonight.
I do wanna clarify. I'm all looking to make an argument out of this. It was the intent to discuss if this is in the charge, then we see the presentation and we vote or don't vote the next week.
All right.
I think that that.
If you wanna do that, that's fine with me. I don't, I I think we've beaten this pretty far to death. Marion, do you have something you wanna?
No, I think it is. To death, and I'm not gonna say anymore except that uh it the subjective gray area in the middle of what is a change of use and what's not. Is the issue, and that we can take up another time.
Well, I think their their authority is based, as Paul said, on state law. So I don't think there's anything we can do to change their authority, but like Marion said, it's a ma- I think it's a discussion for two weeks from now.
Well, two weeks from now is just the bike park. It's not, tonight was discussed. See, the problem is state law is just as vague as our town guidances. It does says they manage the town forests. I looked at the state law. There, what what Paul is saying, if I hear him correctly, is what's defining their delegation of authority is precedent. It's not being defined by having it being written anywhere. It's defined by what's been established via precedent, which isn't documented anywhere. Or not easily available documented. Is that fair to say, Paul?
Yeah, what I'm really saying is if there's a question about a judgment call on a change of use, you ask town councils to do it. Cuz I do that all the time for other communities. It ends up on my lap. So here, if we, if there's a serious question about whether or not this mountain bike path. Is a change of use, the one who answers that is Chris Petrini. Not the Board of Selectmen, not, not the.
Understood.
Administrator.
Understood. Where I, wherever it's driving, the way I structured issues, how do they know when to call town council? That's the issue. It's not well-defined. I guess I've got, I've answered it, I think. You wanna add something to that, Eric?
Yeah, for nineteen years, I've been dealing with town councils and the city solicitors, and I've never, ever. Had a greater disparity of opinions in the Article ninety-seven change of use.
Okay.
I I question how much we waste councils' time on this. If you wanna, if you wanna, you know, up the bill or do whatever, sure, we can bring them in and then. They'll listen to us cuz it's subjective. It's purely subjective, and I am gonna use this case cuz it's a good example. We have a situation where town forests are widely used for mountain biking. We have an example where people maintain trails. So now we're gonna say, okay, now it's these trails and these mountain bikes. And they're like, well, then you're gonna start getting into details and be like, well, what kind of bikes? And it's just gonna get weird. It just is, you know what I mean? And you can do it, bring them in. Um, I'll tell you that one of my favorite lawyers, I respect a lot, once told me, if you want seven opinions, ask four, ask four different lawyers. And with Article ninety-seven, it's gonna be more disparity. I've never seen more, and I'm not. And with Article ninety-seven, it's going to be more disparity. I've never seen more, and I'm not joking either. I'm not, you know, I'm not under hyperbole, and I've never seen any greater disparity of opinions from lawyers about them Article ninety-seven use. So we can spend a whole bunch of money and take a whole bunch of hours to get into the nuances of this, or maybe just look at it next week and make an opinion. I think you know my opinion on this, that it's a little crazy it's gotten this far, but it is what it is, and let's make it go further. Let's spend a couple of great attorneys.
Just not to be provocative, but there's a decision out there that ATV vehicles in this type of land is permitted and not a change of use. So if you can have four-wheel ATVs, gasoline and fumes and all of that stuff being approved by the legal system. There's precedent then that a bike that has no engine and is simply a bike should not raise an issue.
Okay, right. Marion, I'm going to hold off a second. Dave's had his hand up and we pretty much uh to listen to him from the get-go.
In nineteen thirty-eight, when this land was given to the town by Mr. Channing, it was called parkland. That's what the deed says. And in the, someplace in the paperwork from then till now, bicycle trails and bicycles are a big thing in all of the town forest land. Not motorized, but you know, and I believe Mr. Petty wants to say something. Stephen?
Well, I was going to discuss uh some of the information that's been given to the selectman, but if that has to wait until your next meeting.
We we didn't have, on our next meeting, we have on the agenda the bike park specifically. So we, the intent here was to make it two-part discussion.
All right, because I think you have a lot of people in the audience that thought it was tonight.
Well, they were, we were told that to not have it tonight because it was the school break week and people wouldn't be here. That's why we start, isn't that correct, Diane? We structured it that way of purpose.
Actually, I did, I did um email Sarah Raggy to let her know that um that it was not going to be, the bike itself path was not going to be discussed tonight. That the select will go on to review May and June and then would go on to the first meeting in May. So I did notify her of that. But this tonight was just for the charge.
That's why the agenda reads as it does.
Review of the charge.
So I guess on that note, do we want to actually revisit the actual charge? I know it's on the state law. I get that, and so they have those limitations there. But we have, you know, we have two handouts. We have the state law itself. And then you have the uh the town forest committee, which like to some summary from town meeting, which is, you know, they're both vague, but I, and like I said before, I think it's heavily based based on precedent. I personally am satisfied with what the town, um, committee, not just on this last thing, but in general. I think on a day, the others have done a good job and what they've maintained, what they proposed to us, what they did with that pine grove and a lot of different things there. And um I have, I don't see a reason to change or alter the charge of the of the current committee. And even if it is vague and imperfect, it's probably as specific as anything else written around this town, so.
I agree with Eric. I don't see a point in changing it.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I think all, it's it's important to remind everyone that there was a a study, a townwide questionnaire and study that was done, Dave, correct me, but that was probably twenty-five years ago. And then there was another one done this past year, and these things occur periodically and and interestingly enough, both studies, there there have been suggestions which will be followed. But both studies basically have said they like the way things have been done and to continue. So there has been direction by the town and the citizenry over the years. Um, and I I think what Paul said is, is, you know, the basically the town forest committee maintains the town forest. They maintain the trails. They allow certain activity that has been going on in town that the town has has welcomed, and that's, that's what has been continued. Uh, there was, there was a, there was a rule of regulations put together between conservation and town forests in nineteen eighty-one. Um, that's changed over the years. Back then it allowed uh snowmobiling uh with certain restrictions. Um, we've disallowed snowmobiles as of this past year. Uh, hunting in town forest was prohibited until several years ago, when along with approval of the selectmen. Um, we do now allow hunting in town forests, but uh these are the things that have been going on for years, and I think will continue to go on for years. And I think what the the disruption is, is what's brought all this to a head obviously is is one activity and a handful of people that don't like it.
Okay, Sarah.
Say on that, I appreciate, I think it was Sarah that brought up that she wanted a broader audience, and I kind of get that. That's why I do appreciate it coming up in two weeks. Doing the presentation, just not overriding the decision, and maybe that's, um, I don't know. I I do kind of appreciate the concern that, you know, it was a small meeting where, you know, people attended and so on, and maybe it's, you know, give the, give them the right to bring it before the, or, you know, show the larger public here.
It's on the agenda already for for then. Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, I'd just like to ask the select board, how many of you? Well, we're not going to get Paul, but how many of you knew that um mountain bike trails were being developed in the town forest? Including man-made features and contoured trails?
Well, I knew because I went to to uh Dave's meeting two or three months ago.
Okay, so you didn't know about this in two thousand and twenty-one, when the work has been on these trails. I think where I'm going with this is to try and say I'm not questioning the power of the town forest committee. I'm questioning the avenues of communication so that I'm guessing, I mean, I found, I stumbled on these trails myself in two thousand and twenty-one or late two thousand twenty-one. And um there's no mention of these trails as a a project in either the two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one annual report. And in the two thousand and twenty-two annual report, there's mention of the trails. But in the future plans, there's no mention of Skills Park. So I I would be a proponent of saying there needs to be some way for communication to be improved so that the public is aware, and in fact, the select board is aware of what's going on.
Uh, go ahead, Steve.
Yes, this was, Sarah brought this up in nineteen, in twenty twenty-one. She's absolutely correct. During COVID, there was a group of people that wanted to work on a bike, a a separate mountain bike park. Uh, we were not meeting at the time due to COVID. Um, and we, David and I talked about it, and we talked to these guys who were willing to work on a trail. In our opinion, this was not a major event, and we said, sure, go ahead. We have as we did to Sarah, we apologized if we led anyone astray. We apologize for any type of decision not made in a public meeting. We have guaranteed, we have warranted that that would not happen again. And any discussion of the Skills Park has been in public meetings. In fact, Jeff, that was one that you were at. So we've made sure since that event that that has not happened, and it won't happen in the future.
Okay, thank you.
It just would suggest that it's a big enough can topic. I mean, you can see it's a red button topic to some degree that it it would warrant mention in the annual town report as something that the town forest committee is considering is they have a future plans uh bullet point on their uh reports, and it would be, I think, worthy of including that.
Well, I I actually would disagree, and to me, it isn't that big an event. It isn't that big a project. So it isn't a red button to me, and therefore I wouldn't have thought that that's something that has to go into a town report or a major future plan. That's where we differ.
Okay.
I don't, I also would add that I don't think many people read this. So I don't know that that would be a good communications vehicle, but anyway.
Bored is out. People can get it.
Yes, yes, yes. I have my autographed copy. Anyway, I think we beat this pretty thoroughly to death. Dave, do you uh want to add anything?
No, you know.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight, and I apologize to all your um people that were interested in the issue if we miscommunicated the agendas, but we do plan to still have the bike park itself uh on the agenda for, what is it, May fourth? I think it is, Diane.
Currently, it's May fourth right now, yes, unless it gets changed after select will discuss the dates.
Okay. Anyone have anything else on that? It looks like not. So the next item ten is the town meeting prep. Do you want to lead us on this, Diane?
Yeah, I put this on the agenda. Um, usually the select board discuss right before town meeting. They go through the warrant and that there's particular warrant items that they would like to speak on. They decide. Um, and then also I wanted to know, was there any agenda items that you want on the, a meeting prior to the start of the annual town meeting? Because I have us posted for six fifteen on the twenty-fifth.
And it's just a refresh my memory. Are they starting at seven as usual?
He started seven, yes.
Okay.
And I posted us forty-five minutes prior to the start of town meeting.
Okay. Does that, I don't have any issues that I know of that we would need to discuss. Is anyone, uh, now, one thing that they they took the solar section and made it not be in part of the warrant, right? Is that being handled separately? I think the warrant doesn't have the fourteen-page solar bylaw, and I think they posted on the website or did. They extracted that, so that's not in there.
Right.
I'm presuming they'll announce that or explain that.
Yeah, and they they plan to have printouts of the full wording available for handout at town meeting.
Okay. Jackie, did you want to steer us straight here?
Yeah, I I just wanted to say that I made um a hundred copies um today, um, and I'll have them with all the other stuff at at town meeting. So I have copies of the full um solar article.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Um, the only other one, oh, sorry, Marion, I didn't see your hand. You go ahead.
Uh, I wondered if uh Diane or Jeff or whoever remembers could remind us of what our vote was. Our select board vote on the two items that may be uh controversial, that is the solar ground-mounted solar and the um specialized stretch code. Um, I know the specialized stretch code, it was like three to two or.
Both, both, I don't remember the numbers, but both select board and advisory did not uh recommend favorable action on the stretch, specialized stretch code.
Right, but it wasn't unanimous.
No, it's three to two.
Yeah.
Three to two. So I mean, I'm just wondering if at the meeting, the select board would be expected to uh explain their split votes.
No, we don't usually explain it, but we could report that the, sometimes we're asked, how did the select board we vote on this warrant article? And and I would then respond based on Diane's spreadsheet that shows each article and how we voted on each article, that the select boarded, you know, and that voted three to two uh to take no action on that item, whatever. So we don't ever discuss it that I'm aware. We just sometimes report our vote if we're asked to. It would really be, really be the moderator that would ask us, though, in my view. The moderator would uh if there's a reason to ask the select board what their vote was.
So I was going to ask for permission to speak in favor of this special code, even though the board voted by the majority vote against it.
I feel like you would do that as a citizen on the town floor, not as a select board member. Because the select board has voted, this is what we did on advisory, that the vote of the select board is the vote of the select board. If you want to support it as a citizen of the voter of the town, feel free.
But I I was, I I would say something to that uh to to George. The vote uh that advisory makes at their pre-meeting meeting is not always uh unanimous. And so in the town warrant, the uh the dissenting vote is the reason for the dissenting vote is explained, and the select board.
Not always, it's not always explained. It's only explained if a advisory board member wants to make a dissenting opinion. If they vote against something and nobody asks to make a dissenting opinion, they don't, if if it's not a unanimous vote, they don't automatically explain it.
Okay, I I stand corrected.
It's voluntary. It's voluntary.
But my point is.
You know, it's a good point. I understand your point. So we could do it either way. Now, I I'll say that I, we voted not to support the COA study, as I recall, and I got up at town meeting and spoke about it. But I went out into the audience and spoke as a resident, as Georgia said. We were, that was when we were in the uh DPW garage, and I got up and went out there and spoke in support of the COA, whatever it was, thirty grand for their study. But I did it as a citizen.
Yep, that's been our tradition. That's traditionally what we've done the last few years.
Okay.
But I I don't, if you, I I wouldn't, I mean, I'm, I wouldn't be offended if you wanted to do it as a board member. Everyone knows you, you you basically are going to walk from the podium, and they know that you pay for the select board, so they pretty much know that it's a.
Really a rude point. I think people would figure out that maybe.
It's like the stupid comment that everybody makes. I'm going to take this hat off now.
Yeah, right.
As as long as you don't stumble on the stairs coming down to the uh end up in the orchestra pit, we'll be okay.
Just bring multiple hats to wear, Marion, because everybody talks about what hat they're wearing at.
I mean, I'm teasing you, but if if you want to speak as a select board member, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I'm or or.
I'll speak for myself, and people can notice that I might be a select board member.
This is a great item that you might want to consider in your policies going forward. That will have, if say it's a three to two vote, you'll have a majority report and minority report. If it's a four to one vote, it's just a majority.
And in the past, when Chuck was chair, he specifically asked not to give my minority reports. I know we can do it anyway, but it's just kind of interesting. Changed over the years. My experience at other town meetings, well, you know, a big one, sometimes uh if like a chair was one of the minorities, they would sell it so hard, almost selling like the committee didn't like that. You know what I mean? It gets, it gets kind of weird, to be honest with you.
The only thing is if you and Paul want to speak as select board members, we may have to let Mary, the moderator, know just so that they know that how would you be asked to speak? You know what I mean?
I don't mind. I don't think someone has to come off their chair and go down to the podium, whatever.
Speak from the podium. I would just mention the fact that you vote. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, my goal at town meeting is usually to say as little as possible because we've done all the work ahead of time.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, that's good enough for me.
Okay. So um now, I I don't think that uh we have anything else under this agenda item, do we? Anything else people want to talk about about town meeting? I'm not sure what we need on the agenda. You wanted to know if we had anything specific for the six fifteen agenda, I think.
I have one thing I just wanted to bring up, because we, this kind of came from us, was the combination of the treasure collector. Jeremy, I guess, is any, who, are we going to have any presentation on that, or is that just going to, we're going to let it go to vote unless there's questions or how are we handling that?
Oh, I think there should be a presentation, and I think Jeremy should do it.
Okay.
So I coordinated with the time, the moderator, she she's, you know, uh aware that there could be a presentation, and if if that's what the board would like as a sponsor, we can certainly make that happen.
We don't have. Because you did a good job with it at the advisory hearing, so.
I I think we need a presentation on that. I think it's important to have a presentation.
Yep.
We, I think we should actually go down the list of what the select board, um, decide who's talking to what, and will there be presentations on uh all the select board sponsored articles, to be honest with you. We don't have, we have the, we have the whole agenda here.
I'm running, I'm looking at the warrant now. I think we should all just kind of scroll through it and see if there's anything. The funding for the thirty-fifth, three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, I assume, is George Fisk making a present, or Mary Moore?
Yep.
So then Article twelve is the combined treasure collector, so that's Jeremy.
There has also been a request to do a combined presentation for the capital, town capital, so I
Oh, okay.
prepared a draft of that.
Yeah, usually, I mean, traditionally, Jeremy, we've always had like Sean and Zach and Paul there to present the schools.
Yeah.
So it it in the, in interest of kind of being more efficient, there was a request to kind of put it all together in one presentation, so.
Sounds good because.
Yeah, we had Ed Wagner get a dump truck rejected.
He he came in and asked for a dump truck and didn't have a presentation.
Didn't have a dump truck after that.
Got voted down.
Go ahead, Dan.
I, I was just going to mention that advisory, of course, also is having a, a, a pre-meeting before town meeting. And for what it's worth, there are two things that we're currently expecting to revoke. This is all in the nature of dotting i's and crossing t's. Completely non-controversial. But there was one change in one budget number for tri-county schools that occurred after advisory voted to make a recommendation on the budgets. We're going to revoke that. It's a thousand dollar difference. It's just a matter of formality. And in the ground mounted solar bylaw, I believe it turned out that there was a typo in the bylaw, so it changed and so advisor will revoke. In, in the recommended changed bylaw. And so advisor will just revoke that, just dotting i's and crossing t's, but thought that might just be useful information to pass along.
So you're not planning to have someone speak on the minority? You have one minority report, I think.
Uh, so minority report on, um, on the specialized stretch energy code and could change, but as far as I know right now, nobody was planning to speak on that, but that, that could change.
Typically, I know with advisory, they wrote it in the report and they don't typically have anybody.
Right, right. I mean, the, the minority report lays out the view, a consensus view of the three people who are in the minority on that, on that article.
The, the sponsors of both the solar article and the stretch code article both have presentations submitted to the town moderator for.
Yep.
Yep.
As we go down the list, we stop, I guess I'll, I'll actually talk about some article 13, obviously.
Okay.
It's article 13. Which one is that Eric?
That's.
That's the board of assessors.
That was unanimously approved by the select board.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna be, I'd like to speak on that too to support the adoption of the article.
Well, we don't need to speak on every article, Paul. That, that's what drags out meetings is when we keep saying the same thing over and over again.
This is an article that the advisory committee is recommending a no vote on. So that we have to overcome advisory recommendation.
I'm just, okay.
And Paul, do you want to present instead of me or do you want?
Defer to you.
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
It may be I'll say nothing after, it's such an elegant, comprehensive speech by Eric. I maybe don't have to say anything.
Okay. Other than that, I don't know if I have any others in these land acquisition.
Land acquisition is their own capital budget.
Personal. He will be there for the longevity. She's going to pop on that.
Speed limits is that?
Sean is the one there.
Okay.
Sean knows about that.
Solar is planning board, I assume.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes.
If we had, takes seven pages to.
I know, I think more than that.
It's 14 pages, I think.
Double sided.
They didn't include it in the printed version that they mailed to people.
The specialized energy code, that's also energy committee, whatever. And then, then we've got Jackie's articles.
Yep.
So before we leave the solar.
Jackie's got, Jackie, just second Paul. Jackie's got a hand.
Sorry, so, um, the codification articles are going to be, are going to go up front. Yeah, so they'll be doing it before the budget and everything else, so they'll, we're going to vote on those early.
Yep, I think you'll get your quorum of like 50 or whatever we need.
Make sure those get voted in.
We need to finish in one night. I'm just telling, just Mary's going to lay the hammer down and you guys are not going to be able to talk on and on. I'm just.
Yeah, exactly. That's my point.
We have to finish in one night.
Go ahead, Paul.
Just to add a suggestion to advisory on, on the report. Most advisory type reports that other towns are doing now include a recommendation from the planning board. And so when I got to the solar article, while it's good to have advisories' opinion, the, the, the one that's most meaningful to me as a lawyer is the planning board's recommendation. And so I would urge for future advisory reports like this that's distributed to the voters that we include the recommendation of the planning board on zoning articles. Just.
That seems, that seems redundant, Paul. They're the proponent. They're, they're the sponsor of the article. They're, they're the reason why the article's on the warrant.
Yeah.
In other words, we don't have DPW say why they want a new dump truck.
Right, advisory doesn't go to the select board and say how they reported on it. I think advisories, they're, they're supposed to be a standalone entity that is reporting on how they, they recommend.
Yeah.
And the planning board will be presenting the article.
Right, exactly.
They're the proponent, yeah.
Yeah, you want, you want your, I believe you want your advisory committee to be as independent and separate from everybody else, right Dan?
Yes, yes. That's just the way I think that advisory is thinking about it. And as, as mentioned, I, I think given that the planning board is the sponsor of the article and they'll making a, they'll be making a presentation, I think Paul, that it will be clear that the planning board is very strongly in support of that article. I don't, I don't think there'll be any doubt about that. But again, the advisory report is meant to be advisories' perspective. Uh, and, and there is a preference to have it stand as advisories' perspective and, and, and that alone.
Well, the report of the planning board is statutory required and has to be presented to the voters before uh, they vote. So it, it can be done verbally, but that takes up time. So that's why most towns, I'm just reporting.
Yeah.
What's becoming the generally accepted practice is to include the planning board report in the booklet that's published for the voters.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that.
So I don't know, Mary, you just joined. I didn't know if you joined because you had something you wanted to say or just couldn't sleep.
I, I, I have something to say because I can't sleep. So I, I understand that there's been some discussion. I hadn't been on before because I'm writing my script for Tuesday night, but I understand that there's been some discussion about multiple people speaking from the select board on one or more articles. And I just want to say that, you know, the tradition has been, and I prefer this to remain the case, particularly because we definitely don't want to stretch things out and we want to finish in one night for all the reasons that we know about, including that we would have to go to the gym for a second night. That the select, someone on the select board should speak for the select board as a whole and the select board's vote and how the one person should speak for the select board for each article. That's, you know, I, I typically turn to the select board and say, how did the select board vote on this?
But if, if there are dissenting opinions on the select board, then the dissent gets lost in that.
It does, but the select board can, as you know, e- every member of the select board is also a voter and can go to the, leave the stage, go to the microphone and get in line and speak like anyone else.
Yeah, that's what.
We should make a policy about minority opinions. We've poo-pooed them, I mean, this, yeah, whatever. We, we have not liked them in the past, but maybe there is room for them at some point. I don't know. It's like I said, at all the town meetings, I've seen minority opinions almost like red, like majority opinions. I get a little skeptical, but it's real. I mean, the person has a voice and.
I mean, I would also point out that advisory is, you know, strongly discouraged from voicing opinions. Especially, and if they do, in other words, advisory has had its chance, more or less, at their hearing. They all got a chance to speak or get a chance to speak and make their feelings known there. The select board gets to make their feelings known at their meetings where they take their votes as advisory does it, its hearing. And by the time, you know, we get to town meeting, the boards and committees are speaking as a unit. A representative is speaking as a unit and otherwise, you know, it, it can just get crazy and it's, it's not the place for it.
In the time, my time on advisory, one time, I think one member left the stage to go make a comment. So that's as, as a dissenting opinion. And I know it's happened before on the select board as well, but never, never as a dissenting opinion from the board.
Right, that's okay with me, but I think the fact that it was a split vote should be reported at town meeting.
Yep, Jeff always reports on the, it was a vote of three to two or it was a vote of unanimous vote.
Right, yeah, I, I'm good with that. I'll behave, Mary, I promise.
I know you will, Mary. We'll all behave because we're great people.
Well, and I think it's the same ones where, at least one of them is where advisory wrote a dissenting opinion, which should probably respect some of your views on that particular one.
I'm.
It's in the warrant, that was, there's one minority opinion in the warrant.
Yeah, oh, in the advisory report.
Report, yeah, so there, that would probably be what, our, our vote was split on that same article, so. Sending opinion probably captures some of the select board dissent, dissenters also.
Okay, I, I didn't even know which article it was. I just heard from another room in the house that there seemed to be.
Yeah, it's about, it's about the, the zoning stretch code.
So specialized stretch code.
Oh, okay.
That's a good point. That's another reason for me to shut up.
All right, well, well, sorry, go back and have another glass of Chardonnay and.
If only, Jeff.
All right.
Okay.
Good to see you, Mary.
Always a pleasure to see all of you.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I'll definitely need that updated spreadsheet of how we voted on each one, Diane.
Send the text to Jeannie to send it to everybody tomorrow.
Okay.
The updated checklist, so everybody will have it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So now we have the, only thing left is routine business, but before we get to select board reports, you, you wanted us to talk about next meeting dates in May after the town meeting.
Yes, if I remember correctly, at the last select board's meeting, uh, there was a date there that, um, Paul said he couldn't make, and I believe Marion said something about the June 15th date that she would be unable to attend, so it was decided to bring back these dates to review.
If we, if we kept the same schedule, which remember we switched to in early April when Eric requested, our next meeting would be May 4th, which is two weeks from tonight.
Right.
We would have the intervening town meeting in between there, but we would be May 4th, May 18. And the advantage of that, it kind of gets us around the Memorial Day weekend, the weekend after that too, so.
Right, and I, I have to make a week long trip in May and I expressly scheduled it between those two dates, so I wouldn't miss a meeting.
Okay.
So you can still do May 4th and May 18?
Yeah.
That what, Paul, Paul can't make the 18th? Is that it?
Right, I have a town meeting that I, annual town meeting now to be town councilor.
I mean, I'm fine moving it to the 25th, as long as we resume back at the first, you know, we don't actually like reset the two week thing there that goes off. So if you want to make like the 25th and then the first or something like that.
I don't know, I mean, I guess, I wonder, Paul, there's five of us, so if we only have four that night, we can maybe look towards not making anything particularly controversial beyond the 18th.
Well, I hate to miss a meeting. If you look at my tenure on the board, I think maybe this, only a handful of meetings that I've missed, feels my obligation to be there.
Well, I, I'll try to compensate, but I'll miss as many as I can.
I guarantee I am missing the May 18th meeting.
Yes, I know, I know, I know, I know. I've already told you, I've already appointed you to the East Hampton School Committee. You're all set. You're good to go.
I, I could do the 25th.
All right, well, so I guess if that's what we want to do, that's the, the Thursday night before Memorial Day weekends. So if that's what you want to do, and I will be in Chicago, but it doesn't matter, we're doing it via Zoom. I don't have a problem do, doing the meeting. So do we want to do May 4th and then May 25th and then we would do June 1st? I'm not sure if we have enough content to have something a week later, but.
I, I just want to keep on the pathway we have now. Like, I don't mind resetting, you know, I mean, I just, I just have personally, I'd like to keep on this certain recipe we have. So if we do 25th, like the first or maybe three weeks after that, who knows, you know? And that's up to.
Let me ask this question. So right now, if, if we kept this up, we would go to May 4th and then May 18th and then June 1st. Those would be our next dates on this schedule. What if we just didn't do a meeting in the end of May? What if we did June 4th and Ju-
May 4th.
May 4th and June 1st, and we just skipped the second and third week of May. If we've already just had town meeting, maybe we won't have enough on the agenda. The only thing I can.
Not that I'm going to be there, but you're going to want to, you're going to have to reorganize at some point.
We need to reorganize.
Our biggest meeting is what we discussed earlier tonight. We have to have the special meeting for the library is what we really need to focus on.
But, but you also have to reorganize after the election. You have to vote for a chair and all that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and if I may, Jeff, I, you know, at some point before law, it would be nice to, you know, for us all to get together, sort of an in-person retreat to talk about um, overall select board goals and, you know, help me inform annual reviews for, um, uh, key staff here. So for the personnel bylaw, the annual reviews are due uh, from department heads by July 1st and, and there may not be an opportunity this year to help, you know, have the board inform sort of bigger picture goals before that date. Um, I do plan to meet with the department heads starting in May to help advise them on, on their, their, you know, their goal setting for the departments, but would love to have some input from the board in, in that regard, so. You know, that could certainly be one of those, those meetings if you're worried about not having enough to talk about an agenda, that could be one, one meeting alone, just to talk about goals together in person.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea because I'd like it to have, have the select board goals and then they would be translated into department head goals.
Right.
Some of them may be one department responsible for, some of them may be, uh, shared between departments.
So we, we may not be able to fully align that this year, but certainly, you know, don't want to delay that discussion with the board about, you know, the overall goals and vision, so. Um, if you're worried about filling up in a, a night of, uh, of agenda, that's one.
So what I'm hearing us say though, that we want to do May 4th next for sure, and we're saying that we want to do May 25th, is that correct?
But my conflict is June 15th. That's the day.
Well, right now, we're trying to get through May. You have a, you, you have a conflict in May 18th also. You have two conflicts.
Yes, but on the May 18th, it's a trial and presumably.
No, May 18th, you told us was the town meeting. That's what you just said a minute ago.
There may be, there's so many towns now, I'm sorry for me to.
Sorry to comment on this, but that's why we have a five-member board. And if your job has a priority over your volunteerism in Sherburne, then that's that. I mean,
It's okay.
We gotta stay on, we've got to stay on a schedule. I mean, I know I'm not going to be here anymore, but the whole point of having a five-member board is we have regular meetings. If somebody can't be there, they can't be there. They, they make their choices.
So let's, so let's see, we're meeting on May 4th. And so is the consensus, Paul cannot make it on the 18th, so is the consensus, we want to go to May 25th? And but then not get off cycle and go to June 1st? Is that what I'm hearing? You don't have to, you don't have to weigh in, George. Courtney, can you tell us what, what's going on over there? Tell James to tell us what to do. So is that the consensus? Do people want to have a meeting on May 25th? Sounds like Jeremy's input is we should look at goals.
I'm fine. I'm fine either way. You know, I mean, this, again, I'm just going to repeat myself, as long as we go back to the first and then.
We, we would then have to be at June 1st, but then we're back to Paul again on June 15th. So I don't, I think.
Well, I mean, moving, okay, maybe it's May for now and see where it is. I mean, I appreciate that, you know, they moved it for me and whatever else, but I've had to make meetings for my job.
Yeah, I, I, I would rather just go with the cycle and if I can't be there, there's four of you that can blame me and assign stuff to me.
Maybe split the difference with Paul, you know, because I do want to accommodate Paul. Maybe split the difference, like he misses one but not two, you know, we change one, not the other, something like that. I don't know. It seems fair.
Yeah, that's fine with me. So Paul, is the, is the 18th of May or the 15th of June more important to you?
15th of June.
Okay.
So then he needs more, for you to make the meeting, the select board meeting, not, not more important to you for your job, is that how I interpret it?
Say that again.
I don't know what, what you meant. I don't know what, um, you meant, what you interpreted when Jeff said what's more important. More important for you to attend this select board meeting, not more important on your work. Because I would think you'd want to be there on the 18th, just because that's the restructuring. I don't know if you want to be involved with restructuring. We don't know what's going to be in the June meeting.
Absolutely, I want to be there for the restructuring, but I have to be at a town meeting. At a town meeting. And I've got to be there for the selectments meeting before, so from six o'clock on the fifteenth. To eleven o'clock on the fifteenth. I can't do Zoom, I can't.
Are you talking May or June?
June, June is what I'm I'm absolutely out of.
So Paul, just question to you, just answer the question, just question to you, what's more important for you to attend? May eighteenth, June fifteenth, Sherbin Select Board Meeting, which one of those two meetings is more important for you? To attend, because we're just gonna split the difference and. Rearrange one of them.
Well, May eighteenth, because it's the reorganization of the board, the elections are May ninth.
Okay.
That would be the next meeting after the eighteenth.
That's what I thought.
Okay. So then what we'll do is we'll we'll make the eighteenth, though, if we do that. When we have to make that May twenty fifth, but then we'll go back to June first and June fifteenth, so the regular schedule.
When when that rolls around, you know, we'll have a different member on the board, and maybe we vote something different for the June eighteenth, who knows, you know what I mean? But this one seems fine.
For May, for May, go ahead, Marion.
I I I think it's getting confused. We just, Paul just advised that he will attend May eighteenth. So it's the fourth and the eighteenth in May.
Correct.
So to June, so now we're talking about whether or not June fifteenth is the next day. Date, right?
No, that's not right, because Paul wants to, the the most Eric asked the question, what was the most important meeting for him to attend? But Paul can't attend on the eighteenth, right? Because you have a.
No, 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 I think uh.
See, he's gonna miss one of, he's gonna miss a select board meeting. Well, Eric's splitting different, he's gonna decide a select board meeting to miss.
Right.
That's a day, and also. Here's why I suggest. I move that we actually have uh the next meeting. After the town meeting to be um Ma- wait, hold on, my calendar is confused. You know, May twenty fifth. And pursue the next one after that, June first, and then we'll figure out, we won't resolve the meeting dates after that, we'll have a different board makeup at that point. And we'll see what it goes, you know, at uh at that point, but at least that'll accommodate Paul for this immediate one that comes up. And he'll be part of the restructuring, which I think is what he wants, and that's and that's fair.
So we're doing May, go ahead.
And if we just get too far ahead ourselves, the rest is just gonna confuse things.
Okay.
Motion, that's what that's, I think, um what we're deciding here, and I think we're kind of overthinking the situation a little bit right now.
Well, I I'm gonna make it more complicated in a minute, but go ahead, Marion.
Uh it's, I am still completely. Uh uh thrown off by this, because May fourth we're doing. May eighteenth, Paul said he could do, and he wants to be there for the restructuring.
No, he can't do May eighteen.
So he, what he said was, it's important that he can't miss that one.
Yes.
He can't miss Sherbin or can't miss the other town.
He can't miss the restructuring.
And he can't miss it also. Don't overthink it, don't overthink it, let's just go, let's just go May twenty fifth, June first. And that's, trust me, it's it's what the right thing to do is.
May, May, May fourth and June, May fourth and May twenty fifth is what you're saying, is that correct? I think we're good on that. May four, our next meeting is May four. And then the one after that will be May twenty fifth for reorg and Paul. Uh and um. Make May twenty fifth. And then to Eric's point, we'll figure out June. At our Memorial Day party.
So you you'll likely, there will be some reserve fund transfers towards the end of fiscal year, so you'll likely need a meeting somewhat mid to end June.
Yeah, we always do that, yeah. And this, uh now, before we get to that, and Sean's had his hands up several times, you you saw, we need to have a library meeting. I'm not sure when we're gonna do that, but we need to also put on our schedule.
Is it impossible to have a meeting on the Thursday after town meeting?
So town meeting.
No.
Yes, I vote for that.
No, I'm actually, I have a, I have a negotiations meeting.
Okay. Nothing would, nothing would make my month than making a George.
I actually have doing it, because I'm speaking at the library ribbon cutting in our.
I have, I have a meeting on the twenty seventh.
Our dry run for the library ribbon cutting, I believe, is the twenty seventh. Your proposal.
The twenty, the ribbon cutting Saturday, the twenty ninth.
I understand, but we have a dry run at twenty seven, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, so we have a dry run, a double dry run, once indoors and once outdoors.
Yeah, we have the union. Meeting that night, so.
We we started talking about when to do the uh extra meeting.
Yeah.
The library.
Yes. So we're, we we have a, we have April twenty fifth. But I think the rest of that week, as I, like I said, I have a dry run with those, all those library people.
Can we, can we do a executive session before town meeting?
We'll have time.
The library is gonna be, it's not gonna be a short meeting.
True.
And I don't think, I don't think that's next Tuesday. I don't think we'll have enough information ready by then. What I would suggest is if we consider May eleven, you know, in other words.
You'll have to reorganize in order to do that. I won't be a member of the board anymore.
Oh, what's the election the ninth? What's days?
May ninth.
So if you did a meeting on the eleventh, you'd have to do a reorganization first.
Yeah, that's why I'm not sure why you were talking about doing the reorganization meeting on May twenty fifth.
It's the first meeting after the election, you have to do the.
Right, yeah, that that makes sense, okay.
Sean, what were you gonna tell us? Maybe he put it in the chat, did he say something in the chat? June fifteenth.
I was gonna mention you were bailing on most of your uh. Late fiscal year meetings and you you you. Jeremy already touched on it, you have some.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of those come, a lot of those also come in July, just for historical perspective, like. A lot of that. Transfers are a meeting, because you have till like July fifteenth or something like that, I think.
Yeah, July, so that's as you're trying to close it, but we we have some reserve on transfers coming, and you. You're kind of pushing the schedule out like three weeks between meetings, it's gonna get tough.
So while while you're here, then what do you, what what do you think? Go ahead.
I'm good.
What do you think we should do for I are my point in earlier tonight of having a special session just on the library? I we need to. Do a lot of analysis first.
I don't think you can commit to that right now.
You don't think so?
Nah, I think you need to talk about that in the next meeting, maybe.
Yeah, and if Jeff, if we have to call a special, we call a special, you'll have to, like, we can, I guess.
So we'll discuss it May fourth.
Yeah, figure out where, and and if it, something comes up before then, you just. Send out an email and say we've got like, because that could be something that comes up as an emergency executive session.
Okay, all right. I think we're in violent agreement again. We're good.
So June dates, then, have you set settled the June dates?
No, we decided to, we decided to drop.
I think you're just setting the meeting dates for May fourth and May twenty fifth.
Okay, correct.
Got it.
Yep.
See, I am still paying attention.
So you're talking out of any select board, any select board reports, but I don't think I have any anyway. Does anyone have a select board report? Go ahead, Paul.
Can I move to a juror?
Well, no, we we. We haven't asked the town administrator if he has reports.
I'm sorry, I do have some updates. And I'll I'll try to be concise. Um so the the town is a member of power options, it's a consortium um that helps nonprofits like municipalities, colleges. And the like do energy procurements. Uh so through our membership, um we've entered into a nineteen-month contract for electrical supply. Uh for our town buildings. Um that supply uh contract will uh save us thirty-three thousand dollars per year in our electricity costs. Um. I wouldn't advise that to. At this point, to to change your your fiscal year budget for FY twenty-four, and that there's a. Some unknowns as far as the the electrical use for the library, but. Uh this thirty-three thousand dollars in annual savings will will help offset those unknowns, so. Um just wanted to announce that. Um the thinking is that, you know, this this contract will help us. Uh the at the end of this contract, we'll have the opportunity then to to try to sync up with the schools and their. Uh uh energy procurement, uh so this kind of bridges the gap. Um we with power options, we monitored the the futures market for the electrical supply. Um and. You have to react pretty quickly, um. And after monitoring that for a couple of weeks. Uh the trend was was heading up, so we took advantage of and locked in a nineteen-month contract for that supply. Um. Couple other updates, there was at a prior meeting, we discussed the uh. Uh the Mass Coastal Railroad and Mass DOT's plans to upgrade the railroad crossing surface on North Main Street in the town center. That was originally planned to be this coming weekend, the the last weekend and of April school vacation. That's been uh uh delayed to uh the weekend of May twentieth. Um so there'll be, um I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that that has been delayed. Uh and you know, there's a lot more information that will be posted on the town's website, message boards placed on the redways ahead of time. If you recall, that work will involve a detour for the whole duration of the weekend. Around that crossing work, you know, there'll be no access for vehicles or pedestrians through that work zone. Um so we'll we'll, once we get a a detail of the detour. Uh proposed, we'll get that up and distribute it to folks. Um and again, that's gonna be on May tw- the the weekend of May twentieth. Uh we just got an update from Mary Moore and Sam Nelson from the library. Um with Landscape Committee. That uh the landscaper doing that work is gonna be starting on May first. Um and they hope to have all the work done around the library by May twelfth. Uh ahead of uh the fair this planned. Um. So just wanted to relay that. Um. A reminder of of the open meeting law and public records and conflict of interest training that Town Council is putting on. Uh that's scheduled for May fifteenth at six thirty PM, um encourage all. Board members and uh board chairs, um and we'll have staff there as well to attend that training. There's been some sort of recent updates in case law that. Um Town Council will go through and help um. Train train folks.
What time does it start at? Is it six?
Six thirty.
Thirty.
Oh, good, I have a meeting at five thirty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um it's uh the, one of the grants the Council on Aging recently got uh was to prepare a town resource guide. Um so there, the draft of that is in development. Uh ho- hopefully being published um this June. Um. What this is gonna be is sort of, it's gonna create a template that they'll be able to update every year. Um and it's it's a resource guide, it's not only for for elders, but also for for all folks in Sherburne. There's a great sample. Um if you're curious to see what one might look like, the town of Salem or City of Salem, Massachusetts recently did one, Google Salem. Uh aging or town resource guide and get a a sample of that, but. Um. That uh will be published sometime in June. Um it will could be a resource guide for for all residents in Sherburne to. Uh the contact information, events coming up, uh you know, where to go for this or that in a fairly concise format, so. Um great work there by the Council on Aging folks. Um quick update on the. The the study that we're doing with the towns of Needham, Dover, Medfield, um. And regarding shared services, regional services for public health. We've had three meetings of the state uh called it group. Um. And some of our work is gonna be wrapping up at a minimum. The group has decided that we'll have some a draft MOU or a draft mutual aid agreement. Um as a as a work product, so that it'll set in place, you know, a a structure for us to share services. Uh but uh more specifically for for Sherburne, uh we've identified through this this process. Uh possible funding for a public health nurse. Um to share one with the town of Dover and have it funded through this grant, so. Uh a nice opportunity has come up there, and we've had some specific topic talks with the town of Dover regarding that. Um. I think that's that's it. I mentioned the annual reviews by the town's personal administration planner do, so. Um you know, I would certainly appre- appreciate any input that you folks have. To help inform those reviews as we start to sit down with the department heads. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say that that you were modest, that powered options electric savings is huge, and that's a big, big deal, so. You and Sean and the team who is involved in that, that. That's really a big savings.
Just want to compliment you on coming to these meetings so prepared and and. I I appreciate, I know it's a long, makes the meeting longer, but I appreciate your reports at the end of the meeting. Show everything that you've been working on, that's been great.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Ne- never know when to chime in.
No, no, it's good. I I I like to hear what's happening in your office. It's 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 great to hear. Um how busy.
Yep.
We're not used to it, that's what he said.
I'm happy to give you as much as.
No, it's great.
I wasn't used to it with you, I met uh in uh previous lives, so.
Yep.
You're right.
Thank you for being proactive as well.
I I agree with yours wholeheartedly. So.
And I guess one thing coming up for 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 members that will be on the board after the election. Um now that the weather's getting nice, I was, I was contemplating setting up some, like a re- weekly. Uh meet the town administrator on the lawn of town hall sort of thing, you know, on a weekly basis and. Would have kind of invite guests and would would love to have, you know, one or two select board members join me. You know, on on a rotating basis, um. Thinking to have some department heads as well on a rotating basis, but. Have sort of an open, open office hours, you know, out on the town hall lawn, so. Um just putting that out there, um you know, as the weather's getting nice and. Uh if you want to join me, um. Please do. Um. I'll send around the schedule of what I'm thinking, and you you know, you guys can can sign up if you'd like to. You know, just let me know if you want to be there that day or or whatnot, and we can. Kind of advertise it on on our Facebook page or, you know, get the word out, so.
Yeah, we got a new picnic tables and benches too.
Yep.
Sean says he's mowing the lawn.
He's gonna mow the lawn that day. So if you have hay fever, don't come.
I have to say, that's just funny, because. My mother lives on a lake, and literally every time, a few years ago, this gold guy that used to live next to her. Whenever she had a barbecue or a picnic, he would mow his lawn, literally, he would get his lawn mower out any single time she would have something.
All right, you guys, I think we uh. Got uh extra, extra innings in here tonight. We filed a few pitches off and uh, but we got, we got, made some good progress, so thank you. And we'll see you, I guess, at six fifteen uh next Tuesday.
Yeah, in person.
In person.
Yeah.
And link, add link.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, okay, Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Nay.
And I am a, I as well, don't confuse me. Thank you, everyone, for hanging there with us and uh good meeting.
Very good.
Bye.